I'd like to call this April 14, 2022 Regular Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissel?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Nocheck?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
All are present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on on our agenda, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the tragedy that occurred in our district, in our city, a few weeks ago. Ask for a moment of silence and ask that everyone keep the family in your thoughts. And if you're of the praying type, I think prayers are certainly appropriate. Thank you. Our district goals remain the same. We have three: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, community engagement. And all the decisions we make as a board and as an administrative team and as a school district, we measure by those goals. Public comment. I do have a public comment. Samantha Hovanick.
Hello. My name is Samantha Hovanick, and I live at 16040 Acacia Drive in Strongsville. I did send all of you a pretty lengthy email, and so I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Reba, for your response, and also Haley, thank you for responding. I just wanted to speak briefly about the video that's been going around the middle school regarding the racial slurs that an eighth grader has made. I'm the parent of a black child, and I feel that many people are not privy to the conversations that the families in this community who are raising black children have to have with their children regarding Strongsville. I will say this is actually the first time I've had to have a very significant conversation with her about it, and it is just, quite frankly, very heartbreaking. We've been, I've lived in Strongsville for 20 years. My child attended SJJ until sixth grade and decided that she really wanted to be on the track team here, and so we transferred to the middle school. And one of the greatest moments in her sixth grade year was when we left the choir concert, and she was making TikTok videos with kids named Mohammed and Javi and all of these wonderful diversity. And I thought, this is exactly why I transferred to public school. So I was very happy for that. I'm very sad to say that this video has really caused a lot of pain in our family, and I know the family of many other people that have observed it. I know that the school is limited in what they can do regarding things that are posted on social media, and I know that as kids, we need to keep in mind that these children are reacting to things that are very hurtful and that they can't be expected to respond in appropriate ways all of the time. One of the worst parts about my conversation with my eighth grader was in regards to some of the responses that she has witnessed and observed. And so what I want to just ask you guys as a board is, what are we doing and what message are we sending to the kids in a community with the responses that we have to this hate speech that is going around? The other concern that I have is that some of the video that was shared was made by a particular eighth grader, who, I'm not sure what her status is right now at the school, but the person that recorded the video is quite loudly stating to everyone who will listen that she was the person that took the video. She's also very verbal about who she has shared the video with and who then distributed the video to other people. And I've consistently heard that it's been children of Strongsville School District employees, and I think that if we are trying to create a message that says that we are inclusive of everybody within the community, that that has to go from our children to our employees and throughout the rest of the community. In addition, I also just want to let you know that the consequences that these kids are facing, and again, I know that it's hard because it was off property and after school, needs to be serious and swift. And unfortunately, I feel like the examples need to be made because these kids are not taking this seriously. The day after the video was sent out, there was some chatter, and a girl said, "I don't understand why this other child unfriended me on social media." And my daughter said, "Probably because you post videos with culturally insensitive and racial slurs." And the girl turned to her and said, "I can be a racist if I want to." They are not accepting responsibility. They are not taking this seriously. And it is not fair for the children in this community who are not white, who are not peach-colored skin, to have to go through this. They are good kids. They are tough kids, and it's not fair. The other thing I wanted to say is that there was some backlash after the video came out. There was a scuffle at school, whatever you want to call it. And my daughter said that she felt that the girl that was in the fight with her just looked so defeated, and that she was so sad about it because she said, "Now, we don't condone the violence. We don't think that that was an appropriate way to handle it." But she said, "She's such a strong person and has such a strong spirit, and it makes me so sad because I feel like the school system has just broken her." And that is embarrassing to me and to other people in the community. I find it embarrassing. And the last thing that I just want to challenge you guys to do, besides looking at what message we are sending to these children in the community if we're not handling this situation, the other thing I want to challenge you to do is to please examine the makeup of the faculty in our school district. I'm a firm believer that in any organization, it should match the demographic of the people that it is serving. My daughter just made the comment that it was very hard for her because there are no teachers of color in the school, and that at that moment, after that fight, I actually ended up picking her up that day, but she's like, "I just wish that there was someone because I just don't know who I can go to in these moments." And I guess I do have one more thing. I also would just like to state that we do give a lot in Strongsville about veterans and their, supporting our veterans, supporting the people who have served. And the situation that occurred in this school with one of these children who's been going through this, experiencing racism in Strongsville for over two years, is part of a veteran family. So, you know, how can we stand there and say that we support these veterans if we are doing nothing for this child in this school system? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I did want to say thank you for coming, and you can listen. And it was good for us to read the email, to understand a different perspective, and it was good that you came to share. Dr. Reba, do you want to share a little bit of our response at the middle school?
So in terms of the middle school, and we've talked over email, as you said, whenever there's an incident outside of school, off school property, there are laws that protect students' freedom of speech. So what the law clearly states is that if something happens off campus on a personal device, on a personal time, that the school district can only get involved when there's a clear and direct impact or negative impact during a school time period. So, you know, that's the challenge we have as a school district. There was a recent case that was deemed the cheerleader case a couple summers ago with the Supreme Court, where a student failed to make the cheerleading team. She made some nasty remarks about the coach and the school outside of the school district. The school district disciplined her, and the Supreme Court upheld that the school district did not have a right to do that because the fear of a disruption in school was not sufficient. There actually needed to be a clear line of a disruption to school, which there wasn't in that case. There was in this case. So that's why we were able to handle both occurrences in terms of the content and the racist remarks that were made on the video, as well as the physical altercation that happened at school according to our code of conduct. In terms of how do we deal with, I know for this instant, we're talking about racially-charged statements or racist statements, but when we take a look at that, whatever that hate-based speech is directed towards, whether it be somebody's intelligence, or somebody's sexual orientation, or somebody's look, or clothes, or financial status, we do have clear guidelines that we follow in terms of how those incidents are handled within a school district. Now, one of the important things to note is when I say, "Hey, there's this federal law that says when things happen solely off of school property and there's no clear disruption to the school environment," it's not that we don't do anything. We learn about that. We learn about those things consistently, and we intervene. It just means we can't issue school consequences. So let's use this scenario that just happened, and let's say there was no disruption at school. What that would mean is we would call the families. We would let them know about what we've learned on social media. We would share with them some guidance and feedback about how they can help support the school district and our message and our work to support their children at home. We would get school counselors involved if that would be needed, and we would talk to all families involved. And if things did not improve, for example, maybe there wasn't anything that happened at school, but we continue to have a student use the same hate-based speech, there would be, although not consequences, there would be further areas that we could push in terms of having some help or support for students that continue to use these hate-based terms. In terms of our response as a middle school, you know, this is something that we've been working on for some time in our district, but also the middle school, and we have seen improvement. This is an extremely sad event that happened, and, you know, as superintendent, the fact that any of our students have to experience this, whether it's based on race or any identity, is just a shame. And this language, these words, these terms have no place in our school district at any time, especially in 2022. And there's no reason, you know, I've talked to people that have said, "Well, you know, this is in the vernacular. Some of these terms are in music. They're in the way kids talk to one another." We all have a duty and a responsibility as educators, as parents, as a community, to have conversations with our children about what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. And I think we could all say, as parents or caregivers, there's things that our kids hear all the time. Side story, we love going to Cedar Point. My kids, from a very young age, on roller coaster rides heard a lot of colorful language from other kids on the rides, and we had to have that conversation from a young age that, "You may hear these words. You may know these words, but in this family, we do not use these words because that's not how we represent ourselves. That's not what it means to be a Reba in our household, and we need to carry ourselves in a way that represents who we are as a family and who we want to be and treat others." And so that's the conversation we have to have. We're never going to shield our kids to hear these unfortunate terms that are still here, but we do need to provide the support and understanding. And as unfortunate as this incident is, we also need to educate our students that make these bad decisions and unfortunate decisions about how we can grow and develop and learn from these. The biggest challenge that I see in terms of the work that we have to do, so as a school district, we've sat down and talked and said, "We've had this incident. Unfortunately, there was another incident in terms of social media this week that we've worked through. We will continue to be sharing a message with the parents about how we need their support. We will be sharing a message with students. We will continue to enact our consequences that we have as a part of it." But when we take a look at young people, especially at the middle school age, the way that their brain is at that age doesn't fully develop and understand that there's a B, C, and D. There's a steps two, three, and four of my actions and my choices. There's an impulse. There's a feeling that I can put it on Instagram. I could put it on Snapchat. It's going to disappear. It's just going to be with my close friends, and then it's going to go away. And those are the conversations that we need to have. It's not just about, "Hey, it's a snap, and it's going to go away." But we should never put ourselves, our young people should never put themselves in a situation that we have a video, that we have a picture, that we have a statement, that we have a text that can live on forever and be representative of something we've said, something we've done. So I implore all of us, although I understand our kids are going to make mistakes, and they're going to have to learn from those mistakes, and unfortunately, this is not going to be the last incident that we're going to have of somebody saying something insensitive or hateful. But to help support our students and our children from a school perspective and also from a home perspective, to understand what is acceptable in our community, what is acceptable in your homes, and also to understand the power that they hold in their hand every day to share messages, either positive or negative, that will live on for a lifetime. And so I hope if we can come together, not just as a school district, but as a community, to help support one another and support this issue and support the goals that we have for our students, that they can come to school and not be afraid of being bullied, picked on, called names, have to hear the N-word, or any other hate-based word, then that's where we need to go as a district because it's not just about social emotional learning, or it's not just about bullying or behavior. It's about, we want our students to actualize the best version of themselves. And they can't do that when they don't feel safe, when they don't feel comfortable, when they don't feel they belong. And so that's what I urge all of us to do as we work together on this difficult issue.
Well said. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our Facilities Development Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We have Mike here from the Facilities Development Committee that is going, he's like the resident presenter from the committee, so they've been doing a ton of work, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike to share the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Reba, and I appreciate the time to meet and present in front of the board the good work from this Facilities Development Committee. So first off, just for the benefit of the community, I'll reiterate the focus and purpose of the committee. This is a committee that's comprised of citizens with representation from the board, and it's tasked with maintaining the strategic plan and recommendations for capital improvement across the building facilities within the district, and especially with a focus on fiscal responsibility and transparency. So this committee meets, the schedule is variable, but the details are on the website. So if anyone has an interest in learning more about the committee, or even participating in the committee and becoming a member, volunteering your time, the information's on the website. And as Dr. Reba said, this committee's been very busy through this school year, focused on a number of different discussions, and primarily focused on the state of our elementary buildings. And as we've talked previously, the cost of the capital improvement plan for these buildings is becoming to the point where it's just not fiscally responsible to continue to make those investments. For some of our buildings, Chapman, Whitney, as an example, those facilities were built more than 50 years ago. And so that's been our focus this year, really focusing on the elementary buildings and starting to look at what we can do from a strategic planning standpoint. So for the recommendation that I'm here to present this evening, the committee has looked at a number of different partners that we can work with to start a process of what's called educational visioning, and I'll speak to that in a moment, but we want to make the recommendation to engage with a partner known as GPD Group. So educational visioning, what is that? What does that really mean? Really, that is a process. It's a multi-phase process where we're really looking at the design elements of what will serve the educational needs for our students in the committee. And GPD Group would be the group that would help shepherd us through that process, and through that process, it would include broad representation from not only the administration, the teachers, but also the community, parents, students, safety leaders, so on. So that's the nice part about this process is broad representation, a great chance for input, and really make sure that at an outcome of this, we understand and can make good recommendations on the design elements that we want to see in the new buildings. And lastly, the expense for this is really dependent upon the outcome of the process. So if we make it to the end of the process and we decide to move forward and we have a successful campaign, then there's really no charge to the district. We would then, assuming we continue to use GPD Group for the architectural design phase in the future. If we decide not to, then there would be a cost of approximately $40,000. So next, I just wanted to highlight some of the process that we walked through and some of the strengths that we saw in this partner. We had a lot of lively discussion and debate. There were three different vendors that we considered, each having a local presence in the Northeast Ohio area, as well as having experience with other school districts in the region, including some of our neighboring districts. So we conducted interviews with each one of those firms and partners and received proposals from them, and the committee members felt that the GPD proposal and the strengths listed here really met the needs for our district and the goals that we were looking to achieve. So first off, again, a Northeast Ohio company that has project experience with many districts in the region, including ours, and that was one of the selling points. They partnered with us during the middle school renovation, or the middle school build project, as well as the high school renovation. And so we felt there was some great continuity and synergy that we had on that project, and that would be helpful here. And lastly, we really felt like they understood the values of this district and what was important to us. And finally, I just want to recognize the committee members that have participated in this recommendation and thank them for their time, the expertise, and the experience that they bring to this committee, and most importantly, their care and concern for the community. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mike? I wanted to thank you for the time you spent, and Kristin's in the audience. I wanted to publicly thank her also, but the entire Facilities Development Committee. Just two quick comments from my own perspective. One, I remember when our oldest was starting Ohio State, and we had the first day where they bring the parents and the students and show you everything about Ohio State, and the one dean said, you know, tutoring, it's free. The library is free. All the athletic recreation stuff, it's free. It's not really free. It's included. It's not extra. And so what GPD is doing is great. It's included, and I always like to make sure we were aware of that. And then the other one I wanted to say is, you asked for, you announced that we're looking for new members for the Facilities Development Committee, and I just wanted to echo that. As far as the things that a citizen or a person can do to have impact on our school district, this is one of the most instrumental. Those of us who remember being on the committee to build the new middle school and upgrade the high school, the work you did, how many years ago? Four years ago? Was it four years ago? Five years ago? The work that the committee did has a 30-year impact and more on the students in our district. So if anybody's looking for something that they can contribute to, this would be an example of something they can do that'll have a 30- to 50-year impact. So it's good work, and speaking for everybody on the committee, I think it's fun work. So thanks again for the time and the recommendation. Greatly appreciated.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So next, teeing off of the Facilities Committee recommendation, George, do you want to just give an overview of our next steps as far as this recommendation, what the board will engage next in?
Yeah, so as Mr. Caldwell presented, this is to engage GPD for visioning work, and essentially, it's what do we want to have our buildings, what kind of buildings do we want to have in that sense of the elementary levels? But as they help us plan that, we would have to draw a clear line in the sand of, it's just visioning work. And then, once this is determined, if we want to move forward with a project, the board would have to come to consensus to pass a bond levy. And from there, once a bond levy is issued, that work with GPD can no longer be funded by the district as it's through public levy work through public funds, so we would have to utilize the levy committee. With that said, we would still need to adopt a contract with GPD, clearly outlining what their work is so it's not commingled with levy work versus visioning work. So with that, we can't assume that we're going to select GPD as the architect, so we would still need to enter the contract, encumber the funds, as if we're going to pay the funds. And then if there's a successful levy campaign, either we, first we pay the invoice for the work they did, and they credit us back after, if they're selected for an architect, or, yeah, they credit us back. But in order to get to that process, once a bond is issued, we would have to do an RFP for architectural work, and they would have to go through that process and be selected.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George? The commitment to the community is, is we know what the rules are, and we're going to follow the rules, and at the same time, we're going to work in the best interest of our students. And that tees us up to the treasurer's report. George?
So I have one item for your consideration, but before we get to that item, since we were talking a bond issue, I'm allowed to say it now. Earlier in the day, it was confidential. So earlier last week, Moody's reached out to us to do a review of our credit rating, and Moody's is the organization that does credit ratings for districts when they issue debt. So our last rating review was when we refunded the 2012 middle school debt, we were, our rating was confirmed at a AA II with a positive outlook, and kind of give you a rating scale. AAA rating is number one. AA I is number two. AAA rating is number one, AA1 is number two, and AA2 is number three. So at that time, we were already at AA2, but they put a positive outlook on us. And that positive outlook can only last for so long, so they had to review us again to either confirm our AA2, or look at a potential upgrade. So they reached out last week to do a ratings review. We had the ratings review, and they shared this morning that we were upgraded to a AA1. So that was exciting news. So we're one away from AAA rating, and one of their reasons for the upgrade was, I'll just read it from their press release that was just released, "The issue rating upgrade to AA1 reflects the district's strong financial position, proximity to the Cleveland metropolitan area, and a strong socioeconomic profile. The district's very healthy financial position will likely strengthen because of the new revenue recently enacted, operating levy approved by the voters in May 2019." So as I saw Mr. Miko this morning, unfortunately, we decided we don't have any debt to refund, or issue to kind of utilize the upgrade, but hopefully it'll still be there down the road. But either way, I think it speaks volumes to the leadership of the district, the leadership of the board, the district, to move the district from where we were to where we are, and it's being recognized at the national level as well. So I think, big congratulations to everybody. It was exciting news this morning.
It was, it was great news. You know, it would be akin to a personal credit rating, going from, I don't know, a 700 to a 750, or what have you, but it is a testament. I will compliment and congratulate George. He continues to be very modest, and recognize it was a team effort, but teams need leaders. And so we want to thank George for his leadership. The mayor of our city is very proud of his rating, and we are one notch below. So we are, I don't know if it was moxie or stupidity, but during the call, I asked, what do we have to do now to get that extra rating boost? And they weren't very forthcoming with an answer, but it is a great thing, and it's another message to our community that we don't look at the tax dollars as just money for us to spend. It's money that the community is investing, and we're going to treat it well. And we have another example of an outside agency saying, yes, you are treating the taxpayer money well, and we'll continue to do that. So congratulations.
Thank you. And then, the item I have for consideration is the tax rate resolution. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor to be approved, which can be found in Exhibit A. And what this is, this is, the tax rate resolution is an annual item that is typically received from the county, and must be approved and submitted back to the county by the end of March. However, the county, with their reappraisal, this year, they were getting these out to districts, and they also go to cities as well. And they asked for the State Department taxation to extend the deadline to the end of April. So we need to submit this back to the county by the end of the month, and the resolution sets the tax rates for the tax year to allow the county to bill for the property taxes that we receive. And then also, another exciting news to that, due to the evaluation update, as evaluation increased for the city, the bond levy is being reduced by .3 mils from 2.3 mils to 2 mils, and the reduction of the millage is a direct savings to taxpayers of $10.50 per $100,000 valuation. So over the, with the past refunding of the debt, and this decrease, overall, now that levy has been reduced from 2.7 to 2, which generates a $27.50, no, $28 per $100,000 valuation to the homeowners.
That's great news. I don't know about you, but I can buy a lot of something with $28.
And that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Any questions for George? Thank you, George. Dr. Reiba, you're up.
All right, thank you. Kim's ready, she's out of the chair. Come on, come on, come on up. So we've got Erin Green, our director of curriculum, Kim Scott, our secondary math coach, and Bill Wengler, our high school principal, that will be joining us, as has been the case all year, with our work sessions. We featured one of our new positions that is funded with our ESAR dollars to help address and close those gaps that were precipitated by the pandemic. So I'm going to turn it over to the team to share their presentation with you. I believe you have slides at your seat, and then we'll be displaying them on the board over here. So turn it over to the team.
All right. I will start off tonight, and then I won't say a whole lot, because all the attention will be on two of my favorite people here. As Dr. Reiba said, we have Kim Scott, who is in her first year of this role. Through ESAR funds, we were able to create a secondary math coach. This is a role that I know Kim has been super excited for, even if it wasn't her in the position, just the need of having this position. So she's been a champion for it for multiple years. And then I thought it would be nice to bring in our high school principal as well, so we can hear from his viewpoint, how does the position, Kim's position, work not just in the high school, but then seeing the 612 alignment. Kim demanded control of the remote, so.
Had some timing things that I wanted to do.
All right, so just quickly, you know, why are we looking for a secondary math coach? And I think there are multiple reasons, but the key ones being, math, they need specialized support. So it's something that, again, Kim has championed for, she has seen a need, and I'm going to go ahead and let Kim talk a little bit here about why she was interested in the role, why she saw a need for it. Go ahead, Kim.
All right. Well, thanks for letting me come here and share something I'm really passionate about. I've been an educator in this district for 28 years, and I have four girls. My oldest went to kindergarten right down the hallway in Mrs. Boyner's class in 1998, and I have a little one who will be graduating in 2029. So I have a very invested interest in our district, and a particular motivation to help our math education be the very best it can be. So I've felt that way for a long time, and finally, it was, it came to be that this position was something that we were really prioritizing, so I'm really excited for that.
Did you want to share?
Yeah, Bill, do you want to share just a few words on the impact that you've seen on the position, just overall positive effects?
Sure. Between the two of us, we have seven daughters through the district. You know, I, yeah, I think the impact is visible, and there's other spots where we'll talk about specifics, but it's visible in that, you know, I always tease, math instruction in my career has by and large not changed since 1957. You write on the board, copy the problem, erase. If a kid doesn't understand it, they write it on the board again, they erase. And one of the things that we've seen, the growth in the math department is, you can't just teach kids to learn math, you want to teach them to be critical thinkers, because you can't osmosis learn math. You have to understand what your misconceptions are. So one of the early things I've seen with Kim is there's a ripple effect through the math department, speaking for the high school specifically, that there's a transition from do what I do, learn it, to understanding that students have to be the ones to identify their own misconceptions. It's the best way to learn math. So it's like an initial, very right up, that was very early when we started working together, a month into it, that she, that you could see that effect at our teacher-based teams.
That's great. So I was with a group of educators recently, and asked them to consider, you know, what is it that you think of your utopian ultimate math classroom? What kind of adjectives come to mind? So I asked a pause for a moment for some adjectives to come to your mind, what you think of, and reaching beyond. This was the little word cloud that our teachers came up with, and maybe some of those words resonate to you. I think that, you know, as I approach the job every day, I'm thinking about, what is it that I can do to create more of an environment where these words are becoming active and relevant every day? I think one of the issues is, is that, you know, as Bill was saying, it's a changing of mindset. I mean, I think everybody in this room can imagine their math classroom, and it was, we really went through a very traditional situation. And it's not just facilitating a shift in what we're thinking about in terms of the parents and of the teachers, but also of the students. You know, how we approach and think about math is different now than it used to be. Even five, 10 years ago, technology has changed the way that we've done things, and really kind of thinking about the words that are important. I'm on social media a lot for Twitter, I connect with math teachers all over the world and the country and the area, and this one really, like, spoke to me, because the kind of adjectives that I'm thinking of are in the way of being, you know, a community of learners. I want to see, when I walk into a classroom, kids working together to solve things, to be courageous and curious and creative, and to question and take risks. And I think all of this requires a lot more guidance in behalf of the students and the teachers than I think we all gave it credit for. And other subjects, I think we're seeing that transition to a more student-centered classroom in math. We're having to find our way, and it's taking us a little bit longer to try to figure out how that works, getting through a very tight curriculum, and what our teachers need to support that. So I'm approaching it as, you know, what is it that we want to do to be able to teach, not just, I'm going to show you how to think about this problem, but let me create a path to help you get there. You know, what is it that I'm going to do to make sure the environment is set, so that we're asking the right questions, and so that we're getting there? So that's kind of, this is my focus every day when I work, when I step into my building, or whatever building I happen to be in, and what can I do to kind of bring these adjectives and make it come to life? Almost pausing. If any comments or questions, feel free to interject. I do that a lot, Bill's going to come in when I need to. So I'm just going to go through a few slides of what I've done this year to try to build that foundation. A lot of it has been in just the day-to-day planning and support. This is a foundational year, for the most part. I'm still getting to know a lot of the middle school staff. I know the high school staff because I've worked with them, but also, I don't really know, how do they teach? What do they value? What is their, what do they put as importance? And how can we build those strengths off of one another? So I'm a part of all the teacher-based teams, I work with every single one of the seven major math teams, and I can really see how, you know, us being able to share ideas and spark new sorts of energies in the classroom, getting that engagement. We're trying to offer more student choice in our classrooms. You know, what are some things that we can do to encourage students to have a voice and a choice? And, you know, also, how can we help them be successful with also maintaining our rigor? You know, that is a big, that's a big challenge in math, because, you know, we want to give a lot of opportunities for growth, but we also want to maintain high standards and ask students to rise to meet those. So that's kind of the thing that I do on a day-to-day basis. In addition to just like streamlining resources and looking for ways, I brought a little props, I don't know if I had enough stations around, George, you might have to share yours over there, but, you know, one of the things that, you know, I look at, especially the paper line, is like, when we think about questioning, and if you look at the top line of the paper, of the DOK levels, you know, we were in school where we're, solve this equation, here's an equation, solve the equation. We want to turn it into, can you create an equation that would have the solution? Let's raise it up a level, let's bring the challenge level up a little bit, and then take it to, can you create an equation with the greatest solution? And make it even, you know, so it has different layers and different tiers. And I do a lot of research and a lot of investigating of, what are some things that we can bring to all levels of students to help them challenge and enrich themselves? I was a part, I was privileged to be a part of a book study this summer, the middle school teachers had organized surrounding the book called Building Thinking Classrooms, and it contains 14 principles that were really groundbreaking for me as a teacher, changing that traditional approach to a more student-centered approach. And a big part of that has been something that I've been a part of this year, which is the vertical whiteboards and the standing tables in the math classrooms. This has, you wouldn't think that it would make that big of a difference, but it does. And thinking about how we're trying to create a situation where we're really helping out different learners, and what different students need, students, even at the high school level, need to be active. They need to be given a chance to talk and communicate, to get to that next level of problem solving, they need the help of their peers, and they need to be able to make mistakes. And all of those things are kind of afforded by those whiteboards and the tables. Students or teachers report that students just, they fight over them, who gets to sit there which day. So, you know, who's fighting about getting into math class? I mean, who can get there first, so they can get the table? So it's got a little added push with that. But anyway, that's, I feel like that, and now our high school teachers are also talking about bringing that book study into this summer. So we're getting more teachers kind of thinking outside the box a little bit, which I'm really excited about.
Well, I think this ties into other things we have going on at the high school. For, you know, for example, we have a freshman cohort this year, where we have a group of teachers and intervention specialists that meet on a regular basis to discuss what interventions are working for kids who are at risk, what interventions are working for kids who are not doing as well as they should be. This group is something we'd like to expand to, next year to have for freshmen and sophomore, sophomore students. And what's been nice is, for a good example, was I was at the CPE Science TBT about a week ago, and they were discussing that they're working on an algebraic equation for CPE science, and that the students were struggling, some of the students in CPE science were struggling with this. So the CPE team had been working with the Algebra I team to discuss how they could cross over, so their classrooms were dealing with the same misconceptions at the same time. And, you know, I think that, in no small part because of Kim, that communication and collaboration is, if not new, is dramatically improved over two years ago, so that students are not, teachers are not operating in silos. If you have an at-risk kid, all of the teachers should be involved. So that's kind of a problem-solving piece that she's brought to the math, that is now kind of expanding out to the other departments.
Great. Also, the professional growth in our professional development days, I've always felt as a teacher, just having an expert in the room to kind of guide us forward, move us into a forward direction. You know, we see each other a lot in the building, at the high school and the middle school level, and kind of, my role has been to challenge us to think a little bit further in those PD sessions. I'm involved in a group that is for all northeast Ohio mathematics specialists, which has enabled me to keep a really nice pulse on what's going on in other districts. What are some things that are working there that we can bring to our district and have that networking going on? I also encourage our staff, and I'm motivating them to be a part of larger mathematic groups, so they themselves get a chance to be inspired by other fantastic teachers. So I made sure that our, a group of teachers were able to attend the OCTM Math Conference this year that was virtual, but in the future, just giving teachers more of an opportunity to talk to each other and talk to other teachers is something that I think is really important, and that I facilitate as much as I can. Vertical alignment has been something that we have been needing for a long time. That discussion from different levels, from different buildings, is something that, you know, I can't believe how much I've learned this year when I'm in a seventh-grade team, and I can understand what they're doing, and take that to the eighth-grade team, and be able to build and scaffold off of that, to know where there's gaps, where teachers in one team have been reporting that there've been some challenges with a certain topic, and that we know that that's going to be something that we need to focus on in the future years. So I'm excited to see where that vertical alignment is going to go. I teach an honors algebra class as well. I love being in the classroom. That was one part of the job that was hard to let go, so I was really glad that I still get to try out things with my own students, and it's one of the few classes that are taught at the middle school and the high school. So it gives me a direct connection to being able to plan together with a team that is not in my building. So that's kind of, good, Bill. Moving on to the next slide, all right? The other part that I have been doing more this second semester is direct student support. I've been going into specifically eighth-grade math classrooms, because that was an area that we felt they did not have a double block or support period built in for our, for some of our struggling students. So I'm able to provide intervention, which allows that classroom teacher to really provide more enrichment and challenge to the students that are still in there. So just having an extra person to be available when a teacher is trying some really new dynamic lesson, and they just need another extra hand in there, I know as a teacher myself, I really appreciate that. And I play that role as just a support person, somebody that they can talk to, work through lessons, but directly with students. And a lot of the other incredible special, you know, some of them through ESAR funds or whatever, some of the different coordinators that have been, you know, on different committees, so that I, again, that common voice that I'm taking from different schools. Sorry, I'm a little with the transition clicker. I always see this meme up this time of year, it's, you know, the classic, I'm so glad I learned about the parallelograms is so great during parallelogram season, is that I feel like, and that hurts me, like, it's like a knife in my little math heart of like, oh gosh, I hate that our graduates land what they leave, and they like, oh my, I they leave, and they like, oh my, I don't know what it takes to be an adult. And so we put a huge emphasis this year. We are doing two, seven different sections of math seniors are going to be participating in one of these two classes. And the first one was, is piloting, a course by the Department of Education. Dave Boros is taking that on and really being a champion for our non-STEM seniors, still being, provide something that's a real different experience for them, with a lot of hands-on, a lot of applicable math sorts of concepts. But Michelle, Michelle Kupitis has been involved in helping us establish an advanced financial algebra class. Sort of that segue between Algebra II, Trig, and Precalculus, but with the emphasis, the entire year on budgeting, loans, investments, things that we know our students now have the math to understand better than they did in personal finance. That was a one semester class, and it's offered freshman year. So a lot of them just aren't ready to do the more advanced math that is required of those topics. So we're really excited that almost 200 students are going to take advantage of this opportunity. And I'm going to be playing a crucial role in helping both of those teachers develop some classes that are brand-new. And I think, also, I've been an honors math teacher for 25 years, honors geometry, and I was also, this year I'm honors algebra. And that curriculum means a lot to me. And what we're doing to elevate that, to enrich students that aren't maybe falling themselves into the honors curriculum, and that is going to be, I think, more of a goal as we're moving into next year. I think this year was a lot of establishing the standards for the regular track. And next year, I'd like to focus more on, what are we doing in those honors classes, and what are we bringing to them to enhance their experience more?
I think, I'm not going to say how this will help our students, because I think you covered it fully. But I do want to go back, something previous, you know, there was a, in terms of the TBT process, the teacher-based teams is where really everything happens, where teachers collaborate, they talk about what's going on in the classrooms. And I think one of the things that Kim has been directly responsible for, and our building, I think it's part of my passion as well, is, you know, teachers are very good at often having conversations about what they're seeing. Kids aren't getting this skilled. Kids aren't able to do this. It's, there's a lot of art to that. And I think what Kim and I, we have very similar personalities in that, we tried to bring a more data-based kind of approach to this. So when you talk about that kids can't do this standard, for example, how do you know? What's the formative assessment data telling you? And then how are you intervening specifically, for example, this group of kids needs this, this group needs this? We're not just throwing the same thing out. And I want to articulate how important it is this year that Kim has begun that process, where these TBTs, they've changed, not just in math, they've changed in the whole building. But in math, under her guidance, they've become more guided. They're not just conversations about generically what's going on with 500 kids in Algebra I. They're targeted towards standards-based and assessments, which has been a very nice transition in all of, seven of our math TBTs.
For sure. And I just want to add, even though we don't have our middle school principal here, because I asked Bill to be here, the same thing is happening at the middle school level. So it is a 612 comprehensive effort that we're seeing. Didn't want to neglect that.
Absolutely.
Just as a clarification, the class is called Math Modeling? Or are we modeling something for the?
No, it is called, by the state standards, I don't know where I'm at here. Oh goodness, my clicker's gone crazy. Let's see here. Oh, oh no, no. There we go. Okay, sorry. The Department of Education entitles it Math Modeling with Quantitative Reasoning. So that is a direct feeder into, a lot of colleges have changed their college, their entry-level math requirement to quantitative reasoning instead of college algebra. So we weren't, our classes in the way that they were structured, weren't preparing that student for that quantitative reasoning class like we wanted that to be. So that, it is entitled Math Modeling, yes. Sorry. I could have just said yes, wouldn't I?
No, quite honestly, the quantitative reasoning explained what the, what the goal is.
For sure. Aaron really liked this picture. I mean, this is, this is just me and my rawness. The different little props that I've put around the table, you know, our teachers said, some of our sixth grade teachers were talking about how they would like to have more opportunities for students to explore volume. So I'm like, okay, well, I'll go and I'll search for what's out there for volume. And I couldn't find it. I couldn't find different-sized prisms that would give them, and there's little boxes inside to help a child kind of understand, like, what is the volume of this prism? And so many times, they get into this, oh, we just multiply the numbers together. But they really don't have any idea where the volume is actually coming from. So I feel like, you know, one of the things that I have, I have an elementary education background as well. I have certification in elementary and secondary. It's kind of digging back to my elementary roots. And like, what can we do to make things more clear to students at the very functional, basic level? When we first introduce volume, not, what is the structure in which I get the answer, but let me understand it. Like, for example, I might ask you, Rich, you know, what would I need to, how much would I need to be able to fill up that prism? How many more square, how many more cubic inches would be required to create the volume and to fill that prism up? So trying to come up at it at different angles. And we made these. So we designed them on the 3D printer. I made the design. I took, adapted it, changed all the shapes. And all of our media specialists are helping me print wild copies of them. So we're ordering the blocks. Aaron has helped. We ran out of blocks. That's why you don't have a full volume. But I'm glad you got yours there, George. But anyway, so these are one of the many projects of things that I'm looking to do and create. I'm continuing to go into the classroom to model different strategies. And the textbook adoption at the high school is going to be huge, because, you know, it goes along with, what is our vision? What is our, what are we wanting to see out of our classrooms? Are the textbooks fitting our needs? Does a textbook fit our needs? Are there other resources out there that we can use for free that would enhance our curriculum and make it what we want it to be? So there's a lot of opportunities I have creating summer enrichment. I think, I've always heard that other districts have like, you know, the summer packet or whatever. And I hate the summer packet, because I feel like parents aren't able to support their kid through that. So I'm creating an opportunity on one of the software that we have license for, you know, free for parents to be able to offer up some extra phone time for a little math over the summer. So that's something that, in my role, that I have time to kind of create and expand on. So I know the kids are going to be real excited about that. And just in general, working more with the team of people that we have. What can I do to help think on more inquiry-based learning and, yeah, cross-curricular, all those big words up there? So, yeah, there's where I'm at right now. Yeah. Oh, Karen looks like he has a thought.
I don't.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, good. Well, then I'm closing up. Closing up shop, Bill, yeah? Okay, great. So this is what I envision a math classroom looking like. You know, it's not students sitting around looking at their desk. They're up, they're moving, they're talking. They're working through problems that aren't, you know, I know that you can't really tell from the vision what you see there, but these were not easy problems. But because they had that support of each other, because they're getting more acclimated, and as they come up through the years, as they get to the high school, and they're already in that kind of mindset, as we work together to solve hard problems, we don't just wait until the teacher shows us how to do them. That's what I envision for, you know, just making a more impactful math education across the board. So there's my questions. Again, leaving with my, you know, it would, math has a lot of problems, you know, right? So, you know, we're working to fix them and to make them the best they can be, so.
We did not give her coffee before this.
No. This is me all the time.
Correct. Is she not amazing?
No, okay, okay. That's really nice.
You are. We all know that. And you can see her passions.
I was in Michelle Kupitis's room yesterday doing an observation for her evaluation. And that picture she had was exactly what the class was. So it wasn't just, that wasn't her class. Michelle's class was not in the picture. But that's what it looked like. Kids were doing group work, and they were challenging. She was allowing, the kids were challenging each other. It was a data, it was a, I think it was a class where they were doing probability, and they were challenging each other to explain why their answers were wrong or right. And I think that's the huge piece that Kim's talking about. Math is not everyone's favorite subject, shockingly. And understanding where you make your, what your misconceptions are, identifying those yourself. So if you don't like math, and someone says you're doing this wrong, it doesn't click. You have to get there on your own. And then it's even better coming from kid to kid. Peer-to-peer is way better. And there's a lot more self-assessment going on in math than I've seen since I got here. It's only been two years, but it's significantly different the way the classrooms look. And she gets a lot of the credit for that.
Well, thanks. We're bringing the joy back. Bringing the joy back to math.
And Bill, I was also in a classroom yesterday, I believe. Same thing. The kids were up and interacting and solving problems. And, you know, what a difference from a few years ago. And their engagement was high. And when we talk about, you know, I bring it up, because I think when we talk about building a system where people and all teachers are moving together and doing the same, similar things, obviously, there's an art to how we teach. But when they're all kind of using the same things that you're modeling, that you're sharing, and kind of moving all together, they have better conversations, they can compare their data like you're saying. And so you can definitely see your impact. Great job.
Thanks. That's great.
Well, the word got out. I got an email from Mike Griffin down at Maraski, and said, can you send me a video of the stuff that's going on? I didn't have a video of our teachers, but I found a video that modeled what we're doing. And I sent it to him, because he had heard through the grapevine that it was, you know, the feedback from the parents and the students was very positive.
Great.
I have a question. I noticed up there, snuck on there at the bottom, something about math contest club.
Yes, I was so glad you brought that up, because I went, I added that right at the end, Aaron. Sorry about that. But so my fifth grader attends Maraski and was involved in a math competition. I didn't know it went all the way down to grades. It starts in fifth grade and goes all the way up through eighth grade. Now, our high school does Ohio Math League, so they have math competitions there. But we've, we've kind of like lost the middle school. So I am going to start the middle school math contest club, and so that we can work towards being a part of that next year. So, and that is for sixth, seventh, and eighth. It's, fifth grade, Mrs. Lob at the fifth grade Maraski is the one who had been starting that at her level. And just, you know, I know that I'm not all the way down into the elementary levels, but I think that that's an incredible, I think some kids would be really excited about that. And, you know, okay, that's great. Awesome.
Any other questions for Kim, Aaron, or Bill?
How do we respond to the parent that says, you know, this is all great, it's all very high level. Anecdotally, kids can't make change. Kids can't multiply without a calculator. Is that table stakes?
As far as like, because they have to use a calculator?
No, I'm saying, you know, you hear that, you know.
Oh, the practicality of math.
What are we teaching? You know, we're not teaching kids, you know. They're working at the grocery store, or they're working part-time or whatever, and they can't even make change.
Yes.
Or, you know, I can multiply blah, blah, blah in my head, and they have to pull out their phone and pull out a calculator.
Right, right. I think definitely, like, you know, we're looking for more ways that we can incorporate real-world problem-solving and more mental math options. I think that, you know, the phones and the calculators, I mean, there's a part of me that, you know, at a certain point, we want to be able to use the tools that we have. And we're starting to see, though, that there's got to be that other place to bring back the basics and to make sure that we're incorporating that as well. So we certainly don't want to leave the traditional and the real applicable things that the students need. And that starts all the way down in sixth grade. I mean, percentage problems are sixth grade and seventh grade. And, you know, I mean, I would say you could use road trips. I don't know. I hear some moms, like, they ask their kids to take 20% of numbers while they're in the car. I mean, I don't know. It's kind of crazy, but, you know, it's, some people have fun times doing things on the sign, and other people take percentages. So, you know, I think it's, you know, bring more math.
I think it goes back too, though, with the cubes, and the hands-on and the application. And do they understand the math problem they're trying to solve? Or is it just a formula you're plugging in?
I totally agree.
And when it becomes something you truly understand, it has much more impact. And I feel that is a better basis for getting to, yes, I could use a calculator. Yes, I have my phone, but I also understand and could solve it, may solve it in my head.
I think the hands-on thing, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
It's great, especially for someone like me. Because, you know, you just said, like, the volume, and I looked at it, and I'm like, oh, you know what? That makes, now that makes sense.
It makes so much more sense, right?
If you would have said that to me without this, I would have just, that's just me. There are some people that are visual, and they have to hold it and see it. And so I think for kids, like, you know, like, I would have loved to use my math.
Right. And with, there's a lot of hands-on things for all of those. I mean, and that's, I think that's something that technology, some kids can't get to that and connect to that level. And it's also, what makes them show up and be receptive to listening? It's not that it's not being taught. It's that, have they already lost the joy of, I can't do math by the time they get to the place where it's introduced? And, you know, that's, I talk about that every day. You know, it's, drilling has got its place, but it's also, what are we doing to make sure that students want to be there and are receptive to?
Well, and the reality is, math, I mean, historically, math instruction is 95% auditory. And 95% of people are not auditory learners. They're just not. That's why 31% of our eligible kids go to Polaris, so they can do things with their hands. Math should not just be auditory. It should also be kinesthetic. It should be social, back and forth. And I think that, I think that changes, across our America, that change is going to take time. But I think that definitely, at Strongsville, for the high schools where I'm at, I can see that that change has begun. It's visible when I go into classrooms, and I try to go into classrooms a lot.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I want to thank Bill and Kim for being here this evening.
Thank you, thank you.
They did a great job.
Appreciate it. All right. Does anybody else need the clicker?
No.
Don't take it home. Leave it there.
Right there. Thank you.
Do we get to keep this?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Well, we have a model set on. We'll make you one personally. I'll make sure I bring them back. But we're still getting our classroom model set going. So John's going to pick them up later. Play with them until the end of the meeting.
We're going to learn with them.
Yes, yes.
He doesn't care. Well, thanks again for everybody, but especially Kim for your passionate work that you've done. And it's a great transition in terms of our next topic for discussion, which is our ESSR follow-up, our ESSR budget, which we started talking about a couple me, our last meeting. You know, one of the things, you know, that, what a great connection to say, we've had this position, we've utilized federal dollars to help support some of the gaps our students have. And not only do that, but change kind of our complete approach to how we teach mathematics. One of the things, years ago, we didn't have any coaches in our district. And I remember the first time I brought up to the board, maybe it was like six, seven years ago, about introducing coaches to our district, some of the, not so much from the board, but from the community, was, why do adults need coaches? You know, they go to school, they go to college, they should be able to know this and do this. Why are we investing in adults to coach other adults? I think we've seen tonight the impact that coaches can have. Not only knowledge, expertise, time, ability to research, but one of the things that, you know, we may not have touched on today, having Kim come into the classroom and model and show and be a sense of safety that I can throw out, or put to the side some of the stuff that I've done for years and years and years, and try something new, that takes a lot of risk. And that takes a lot of risk, not only to see, what is this environment going to look like, and does it work for me? But what if it doesn't work, and I don't get the results the same way that I did before? There needs to be a sense of safety and support and security for our teachers to take those risks, to do something different, to understand that we're supportive, that there may be a little dip before we get to the benefits that we know we're going to realize based on this approach. And seeing kids in a classroom that could no longer hide, because they have to be active participants in mathematics, and to be thinkers and problem solvers, and collaborative in their work together, that doesn't happen without another adult support for everybody. There are teachers that are willing, they're, they're the Kims of the world that are willing to put themselves out there and try. But that's not everybody. But we can take that critical mass and support it when we have somebody in their corner helping to share, model, and lead the way. So I think that's the power of the work that we're doing here. So let's take a look at ESSR. So ESSR, again, is our federal dollars that we've received. We've got a couple buckets of ESSR dollars left, ESSR II, ESSR III. We've got ESSR dollars that have to be allocated just for special education funds for school age, as well as preschool. This started last year. And what I've shown on the screen, you don't have this copy here, is that altogether we have $6.1 million that we were allocated in terms of our general ESSR funds to utilize. Based on George's calculations, at the end of this year, we will have spent $2.4 million of those funds, which leave us $3.7 million to spend over the next two years. Now, I'm not going to get into the details. Some of those funds have to be spent by '23.
ESSR II has to be spent by the end of next fiscal year. And the remaining ESSR, ESSR III has to be spent by fiscal year 2024.
Yeah, so we've got a different buckets, but George, that's George's concern, to make sure we're allocating the funds to the right buckets of dollars. And with his fancy AA1 rating, I have all the confidence in the world he's going to be able to take care of it. So we've shared with the board So we've shared with the board last time, here's the plan, right? Here are options of what we, what we did last, our, our budget and our plan last year, as well as some new ideas. So I'm not going to review all of that because we talked about that last time. So what we've done is we've spent a lot of time looking at a variety of scenarios. Let me make sure that I can get this fitted as big as possible. A variety of scenarios that we can look at. So we've got our available funds, as we said, is $3.7 million, and option one is taking the budget that we, as a board, developed last year. And in that budget, we said some positions would continue on for one year, some would continue on for two years, some would continue on for all three. So we took that as an exercise and said, let, let's just take that original plan and extend it for all three years. No matter what it said, we're just going to, every idea is going to be extended for, for all three years. And we've broken down our ESER budget into two buckets, staff and non-staff. So over the next two years, we've looked at that, and you can see, just, I'm going to go through this for this one as an example. Next year, if we did that, we'd be slated to spend $1.5 million in staff, and you have this as a handout, and this is on the front page of your handout, if you want to look at it there. In the following year, we would spend another $1.5 million in staff. Nine, our non-staff items in the first year, next year, we would spend almost $600,000, and the year after, we'd spend about a little over $1.1 million. Add that all up, we're at $4.8 million. We only have $3.7 million to spend, we're, we've overspent by $1.1 million. So as the exercise, it says to us, okay, we can't just take everything we've done this year and replicate it the next three years, we have to make some reductions. So this goes to option two, which is on your sheet and at the top of the board. So we said, what if we took the plan as it was adopted last year and implemented as it was adopted? Meaning if, if it said it was going to stop at year one, it stops at year one. So for example, in the original plan, we have MTSS coordinators this year, we have two of those. It said we were going to have those positions for only one year. Same for every other position that's listed there in red in the removed components. So as we take a look at the original ideas, in this, we've removed MTSS coordinators, RTI intervention specialists, summer learning staffing, as well as a special education coach. You could see there's a definite reduction of cost in that, to where we're averaging about $700,000 each year over the next two years. The other thing that we did, we, custodial equipment was a part of last year, it wasn't supposed to continue on, we eliminated that. So that reduced the non-staff items for next year a little bit. So you could see if we total that all up, the total expense for that is about $3.1 million. So that says, okay, we can do that, we can stick with our original plan, we can implement that, and we have $600,000 left to figure out how do we want to allocate that and spend that over the next two years. Everybody with me so far? All right. So those just kind of lay the foundation, saying, option one is out, we can't do that. Option two, we can do that, but we have some funding to determine how we're going to allocate. So this is where I started building some scenarios about what the plan could actually be. Again, we start, this is the option, it's on the bottom of the page one. And what we have done here is basically I took option two and left it the same, so those same positions are removed, the dollar figures are exactly the same. But I started changing some things with the non-staff items. So I said, okay, in the non-staff items for next year, we said we were going to replace windows at two buildings, that we had allocated $75,000. Steve can absorb that in his permanent improvement budget, he can pace that out, we could be okay with taking that out. So we removed that, we removed the custodial equipment, which was already removed. But one of the things that's built in all of these non-staff items are technology subscriptions. You know, we have Screencastify, we have Blocksi, we have Kami, a variety of other ones, that we said, when these ESER funds are done, we still need these software programs. They're not going to go away, they're going to have to go in the general fund budget. And George and I had a conversation, and George said, you know, within the departmental budgets, we could absorb those and not have to increase costs to the district. So during this two-year period, if we can invest in staff that can have a direct impact on our kids, let's take a look at removing all of those technology subscriptions, absorbing them in our, in our department budgets. It's not going to raise our budgets because we have some wiggle room in there to take those on. And you could see that's a, a change, a reduction of about $400,000 in, in that year. And so if you take a look at that, that one, that, that takes the total cost of $2.4 million. That means from the 3.7, we now have about $1.2, $1.3 million that we can allocate differently towards staff. I'm not recommending that, I'm just, that's the next option. The final option that I want to share with you, this is actually what I'm recommending the board consider. Again, we didn't do anything with staffing, this is on the top of page two, if you're following along. We didn't do anything with staffing. We kept that non-staff items for '22, '23 the same, it's still $106,000. We took out the tech subscription, so it's option three. And the only change we made was in non-staff '23, '24, we had a Kinsner HVAC project. So we need to address the HVAC system at Kinsner. The consideration that, so what I did is the only difference from that 900 and, what was it, 905 to 130 is $775,000 was allocated to the Kinsner HVAC system. I took that out, and the reason I took that out is we do have a, a good cash balance, and that cash balance can be used for one-time expenses. So that one-time expense of a new HVAC system at Kinsner can be utilized. We have the funds, as our finance committee just talked about, kind of procedures of how to utilize that cash balance. So this would be an option that, you know, we can use general fund dollars to support. And again, if the spirit and the heart of the ESER funds is to go back to our students, putting in a new HVAC system, it aligns, it's allow, it's an allowable expense, but I'm asking the board to consider taking that $775,000 and investing it in staff that can help enhance the experiences of our kids. So if we do that, the total cost is $1.7 million. That gives us a little over $2 million in funds to take a look at how we want to utilize some of the things that have been removed, as well as new ideas. If you remember on my sheet from last time, there was blue, highlighted blue of here's some new ideas that we may want to consider. So sticking on that same page, we're going to look at ESER options A. So this is saying, in my scenario that I'm proposing to the board, we have about $2 million, if we go with option four, to reinvest $2 million to utilize. And here's what I'm suggesting, ESER A are all things that I'm suggesting that we put back into the ESER plan and add it for extended time period, or that we add it new. So I'm just going to go through these line item by line item. Currently in the plan this year, we have two MTSS coordinators. MTSS means multi-tiered systems of support. Their goal and their work is to develop the systems that are needed to help support students that are not meeting grade level expectations, specifically in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and to create the system so how we intervene to close the gap, especially crucial pre-K to 12, but especially earlier the better. And so what I am recommending is that we continue the, the elementary position, the pre-K to five position for the next two years. The other thing that that position will have to take on, if you've seen, we haven't talked a lot about it yet, Aaron will talk about it in May, but there are significant changes in dyslexia rules and laws and screening and, and what we have to do. We are in a great position because of the work that Andy Trejo and Aaron have done in that area and the foundational systems we have in place, but we're going to need support and somebody to help oversee this major lift to assess everybody in the certain grade bands next year, and then continue that process on into future years. Grade six to 12, I'm recommending that we consider, those parentheses are the, the position. So our, our pre-K to five MTSS coordinator is a part-time position, so it's a .6, so 60% of the work week. 1.0 means they work X amount of, you know, seven and a half hours a day, five days a week. So six to 12, I'm recommending that we continue that position for next year. They need one more year to get the system built. They've made some good headway, but it's not done yet. I think it would be a disservice to pull that away as it's half-built, but I'm not recommending it for the second year. Giving next year to build it, and then it will be the secondary administrator's responsibility to continue to, to implement that system as developed. One of the new ideas that we shared is we, we talked about adding an additional teacher that would help support instrumental music band and orchestra at the secondary level. Again, to address the pandemic, the gaps that were created when kids did not have live instruction, that they're now in the secondary level. We believe we can find, the recommendation of our, Andy Hire and Brian King is we can do this with one person, that one person, as you become, as you get licensed to be an instrumental music teacher, you have a primary instrument, but you're, you're taught to be both strings and band. So they believe they can find a person that can have skills in both, and they could share that person to help support our students. And those are the costs, again, we don't have an actual person in that, so those are estimated costs based on what we believe. We talked about the power of a secondary math coach. We have a new math adoption that's coming into, we, the board adopted last meeting. And we talked about the importance of vertical alignment. So we are looking to, I'm recommending that we hire an elementary math coach, and that position would be funded through ESER over the next two years. Again, this is a ballpark, it could be higher, it could be lower, depending on the person that we, we get. Secondary band and orchestra, elementary math coach, those would be new to the ESER plan. The next couple rows are RTI intervention specialists. So you've met them, Carson was here, we had a presentation earlier in the school year. Right now, we have .5 at the preschool, I'm suggesting we continue with that. These positions help students, not just with disabilities, but students that are same-age peers that need intervention and support. So we identify them, we identify targeted interventions, teachers help support this as well as our ESER, RTI intervention specialists. Right now, at the elementary level, we have four. We have three that are full-time in a building and one that is shared between Kinsner and Maraski based on student need. I'm recommending that we can go down to three next year and, and do some sharing between the buildings. We have one at the middle school, I'm recommending we keep that one at the middle school. We have one at the high school, I am not recommending that we continue with one at the high school, I feel we're adequately staffed there and we don't need that position any further. We have a special education coach. The reason you see a zero for next year is that would go into that other funding bucket that's specifically for special education, and that that's only a one-year timeframe we can use those dollars. Then the next year, that position would come back to the ESER, the ESER funds. If you take a look at that in total, that would, that two-year total for all of those positions would be $1.4 million. If you go back up here, we had $2 million to spend. So even with all of those positions, I'm going to scroll down for a second, I've mapped it out here on the bottom to say, here's option two, here's option three, here's option four, here's the available cash. If we go ahead with everything in the green section, option A, we're out of money, we're, we're close, we've got extra cash to still spend. So bless you. That's why I'm saying we go with option four. I'm recommending all of the positions in option A. And now we're still in a position to say, okay, we still have $600,000 to determine how to utilize moving forward. Still on the bottom of page two, we go to ESER options B. So this is where, in my recommendation to you, this is the menu of options. They have RTI intervention specialists, if you want to add more in and say, we would like to do that one per building, or go back to what we have this year and have four, you have the cost of what those would be. Custodial equipment was removed, if we want to add that in, you have a cost there. The summer learning program was only slated for one year. If we want to use ESER funds to pay for the summer learning program, and we think that still qualifies, that's there. We have permanent subs right now, those are being paid out of the general fund. The permanent subs are important and they relate because the training we have to provide to teachers requires subs, and there's a sub shortage, and we wouldn't be able to provide the limited PD we were able to do this year without those permanent subpositions. So as you take a look at those, Jenny has recommended 10 certificated substitutes, I think it was four at the secondary and six at the elementary, or vice versa?
No, that's right.
So four at the secondary, six at the elementary. We get four monitor subs, monitors have been tough positions to fill. And we get three bus transportation subs to fulfill that role because it's tough to find daily subs for bus drivers. So again, we have $600,000 to spend, you can take a look at one of those or a combination of those and, and say that, that can be there. Two of the other things that were in the blue, I just wanted to add because we said, but we have PBIS consultants that we have to help support our work, strategic planning, you know, using a consultant for that. These are all options, but I would suggest to you, I'm not recommending either of those two options. Again, it goes with the technology subscriptions, we have rooms in our budget to allocate those. So as you look at this, I would look at the, the other items on the list as, as potential items to add. So with that, the other thing that I mentioned, it was on ESER, sixth grade band, last year for ESER, we added sixth grade band, so we're now on the last page here. As I shared with you, that no longer qualifies for ESER because those students were not negatively impacted by the pandemic. And shared that I'm recommending that that goes into the general fund, and we just wanted to share the cost with you of what that would be if it goes into the general fund. So before I answer any questions or get any feedback, all of you have a homework assignment. And the homework assignment is, we have to make decisions by the April 28th meeting as to how we're going to allocate the ESER funds. And so what I'm asking all of the board members to do is to take a look and first start with, are you comfortable and do we have consensus that option four is the way we, we want to go? Option four is saying tech, tech subscriptions and Kinsner HVAC, let's handle that through another funding source, let's allocate staffing, or these dollars to staffing. If option four is what you agree with, then you move on to, are you okay with all the ESER A options that I said let's add to it? Come back with feedback of what you like, what you don't like, considerations that you want us to take in to, to share. If you're okay with what I've shared with option A, then the last piece of the homework is for option B, what do you like? Which of those aspects do you want to consider? That way we can finalize that, George can start to build the budget, Jenny can deal with the staffing decisions that are going to be impacted for this, if there's postings, we can start to post and move forward. The other thing to always remember is even though we're kind of planning for two years, last year we planned for three years, right? But we said we're going to come back before year two to revise. We're planning for the next two years. Although we hope this is a solid plan, we'll have the opportunity to come back this time next year to say, do we still want to do this for the final year? Where are we with the actual funding? It's going to depend for the people we hire, do they take single insurance, do they take family insurance, things of that nature, nature makes an impact. So April 28th is, is our goal, and so I wanted to kind of share all that and then see if there's any questions, clarifications, or Mr. Miko, any discussion you want to have at this time?
Does anyone have questions? So a couple of comments. One, I think it's healthy that we recognize that this is our two-year plan, but just like with our three-year plan, you make decisions, you then have to evaluate how the decisions play out. So we do need to be cognizant that year three, we may say, you know what, we thought this was a bigger issue or a smaller issue, and it doesn't make sense for us to stay to this plan if there's not a need for it, or if it's not, if it's not delivering the results we have. I'm going to go through it, but I would ask if you could go through these and, you know, whether it's notes or comments, what I'm interested in is which of these positions do we predict are done, and which of these positions have potential to continue beyond? Just so that we can frame what our, our burden or what our future commitment is. That's important to me, just to understand that. So I don't, I'm happy to make my assumptions, but I'd like to have your expertise or, or your opinion on what things, you know, that, some of them are easy. You know, banned, banned at the middle school, that was easy. We knew we're going to use this pile of money as a vehicle, but we knew eventually that was going to keep. Some of them are, I'm not, I don't know what the answer is, I just have my suspicions, but I don't want to make decisions on suspicions. So I think that would be helpful for me and it's helpful for the rest of the board.
It's like the option B, like, all of those down there, so you're saying like, look at those, decide.
Yeah, so.
It would probably be helpful, really, I don't know if Rich and me are saying the same thing, but, you know, because I don't really know, I mean, is a custodial equipment really, really needed? You know what I mean? Like, it would be helpful if you just kind of said like, one to 10, this is where you put them, and then we could say, I don't know why. put them, and then we could say, I don't know why you want that. You know what I mean? Because it's kind of hard to just say, like, I look at the bus thing, I know we're always short bus drivers. So, you know, I would look at that first and go, oh, you know, we should probably look at the bus situation, because it kind of is crazy sometimes, but that might not be what you're seeing every day.
No, so that's a great suggestion. So, I'll go through, and based on our team discussion, go through and put a number of, one being where I would prioritize. I'll add a column that says, here's something that I think will continue beyond the ESER funds, or things that I think will stop, and then we can go from there.
Could you also do that for option A?
The other thing that I would share is, we met the other day with all of the directors. You know, this year, Kim kind of said it, it was about getting your legs under you, getting to know the people, getting to know the position. The expectation is different for next year, for our continuing positions, that, you know, we don't have that learning curve, we don't have that idea of really, how do I work in this new position? So, we've created a template that will identify what their year-long focus is in each of these ESER positions, what their goals are for the year, and the outcomes for those goals, and then obviously, how supervisors, directors, we can support them in that process. So, that will be a strong piece of evidence for us to look at next year, to see, is that, do we still have another iteration where we've got more work to do, or do we feel it served the need that it has, and we can put our resources in a different area?
It's a good plan, thanks for the work.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Some of us enjoy spreadsheets, some of us don't, but it works out well.
The one thing, if you really enjoy spreadsheets, I'll just share this, as I know some of our board members are getting familiar with Google. So, you all have this, I shared it with you last night. If you go to File, and go to Make a Copy, it will make a copy of it, and you can edit it. So, what I mean by that is, if you're somebody, like, I don't know, Rich, that is going to want to go through, just spitballing. All of this is formula-based, so what I mean, if you want to go here and say, hey, I really don't want the PBIS consultant, I can change those out to zeros, you'll see all the formulas change, and you can-
I was looking forward to doing it to the one copy.
Ha!
Now that you shot that idea down.
So, just that, that is an option, if you want to work through and see what different scenarios you can utilize.
Thank you.
The last thing that I had as a discussion item for tonight is the Solo Academy, so I'm going to ask Aaron to come back to the table, and Amy Penny, our supervisor of elementary curriculum, to help, help me, and give some context. The reason, the reason they're coming to the table with me is, as you know, the prestigious position of principal of the Solo Academy. But really, Amy and Aaron do the work day-to-day. So, Aaron oversees the secondary program, six to 12. Amy oversees the elementary program, K to five. So, we've had, we've had an online program for many years in our school district, probably six or seven years now. We had, we called it the Strongsville Academy at the high school, and then we contracted with, what was it, Ohio Online? Ohio Online through the Educational Service Center, we contracted for our elementary and middle school students. We had a small handful, this is all prior to the pandemic. Had a small handful of students, we controlled the high school version of it, the Educational Service Center controlled the elementary and middle school. So, basically, a family would say, hey, we would love to be a part of Strongsville City Schools, but, you know, a large middle school, or this just isn't working for our family, we'd like to go online. We would be a liaison with the Educational Service Center, but the Educational Service Center kind of took it from there. But they were still a Strongsville City School student, and it was a benefit that we provided. The pandemic came, and it expanded exponentially, you know. I think at the heart of the pandemic, we had a significant number of students, you know, on the program in year one, and it's reduced over the last year. But going into this year, the legislators came out and said, we need to legislate, for lack of a better word, all of these virtual schools. So, it's not just the ESC version, you can't do that anymore. You have to have an IRN, which is, you have to register a school building, you have to have a principal, you have to have oversight, you have to follow attendance rules, it has to be a school, it just can't be this kind of ancillary piece that is utilized. So, we can't go back to what we did before the pandemic. We either keep, we have a, it's called the Solo Academy, we have, it's a separate virtual school building in our district. We keep that, or we go away from it. And so, Aaron and I spent a lot, we spent months kind of talking about different options. They've surveyed, you know, their parents that are currently in the program. So, what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Amy and Aaron, to share kind of the research that they've done, what their experiences were, and then we'll kind of share the recommendation of what the future of the Solo Academy is that we're proposing. So, Amy, why don't you start with elementary?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Reba. So, you know, you can find research on online learning versus in-person learning, right? And there's so many reasons why in-person learning is so beneficial to our students. You know, we learned this year from Stephen, his letters, the importance of foundational skills, we've talked about our standards, and how rigorous our content is, so, you know, it'd be hard for you to find any research that kind of goes against, you know, in-person learning not being, you know, more effective for our kids. But it also, the research also says that the students who struggle the most in in-person learning, struggle even more, and need even more support if they're on a learning platform. So, just kind of going through our district data, I wanted to see if that data echoed through what we were seeing with our K-5 students, and indeed, it does echo that same data. We've asked parents, you know, how do you feel about the program, what are the benefits of the program? And the benefits, the two overarching themes for the benefits are, we like it because we have flexibility of when we can do the work, and then COVID reasons, you know, whether it was, I want to protect my children, or I'm just not ready to come back to school. So, overwhelmingly, those were the two benefits of having an online program. But, the question was asked, what academic challenges are you having with your child in, you know, at home, doing this online? And a couple of themes came up, number one being, just being able to have that live instruction with a teacher. And so, we've talked, you know, a lot tonight about the importance of interventions with our kids who are struggling, our tier-one instruction for all of our students, and so, that's overwhelmingly what parents are struggling with at home. The other thing is, the social interactions with students, and peers, and adults, and teachers, they're really struggling with that. And just having that engagement in our online program, so, just to kind of let you know, you know, they can follow a video, they do a little activity with it, and then they turn it into their online teacher. There's really no interaction, there's no time for them to get any support if they're not understanding a concept or a skill. And so, that's where our parents are saying, you know, this is really a struggle for us as far as the online learning piece. Just to kind of backtrack a little bit, we started with 41 K-5 students at the beginning of the year. We had 16 go back at semester, because that was, you know, the choice at the semester, we had 16 go back to in-person. We had four of our children, we had to tell them to go back to in-person learning, because they had attendance plans. And so, per, you know, what we have to do as a district, we have to have attendance plans and make sure they're getting online. So, we had four, four more go back to in-person, and then we did have two come back from online, or from in-person to, from the online learning. So, the, what we've tried to do is, especially for our K-2 learners, is we really tried to give, provide them services that they would need for those foundational skills. So, one of our reading specialists, Mrs. Coleman, she meets small groups, and sometimes individually with students. So, they're getting some support that way, but we're not, our third through fifth graders aren't getting that same support. We also, the, we can't offer gifted services to our students who have qualified for gifted services through that online platform. So, that's another concern that we have. The other, the other thing that parents are concerned about, they want their children to have opportunities to participate in music, and art, and PE. And we don't have that through our Solo Academy. So, they only have an ELA, a math, and either science or social studies. So, for just various reasons, you know, it's, it's not always beneficial for our students to be on that online platform. So, that's what we're kind of seeing.
Do we have, of the, is it 2021?
Right now, we have 23.
23. Do we have gifted in the 23?
That are identified as gifted?
Right.
I would have to look, I didn't, I didn't, I can look at that.
We had a couple at the beginning of the year, I don't know if they made the transition from the semester, but it was a small number.
Mm-hmm. So, that's, that's what we're seeing, observation-wise, and based on our parent feedback of where we are currently with our Solo program.
So, do the parents want to come back?
We have, we asked them, if you had the opportunity next year, would you come, would you want to come back to the building, or have the online program? And 55.6 of our parents said that they would rather come back to the building. Percent.
Okay.
Did I say people? Percent, 55%.
So, half of the 23?
Mm-hmm.
Half of the 23, but that's representative, right? Not everybody filled out the survey.
Sure.
So, before we go on to secondary, based on that fact, based on when we take a look at, our job is to say, what is, what is educationally best for our students? What is educationally best for our students, especially our youngest learners, is that they're in-person? And when we get feedback from the parents that gave feedback, that educationally, the program's not great at meeting their needs, but it does provide convenience of schedule, I think we need to step in and make the decision that, you know, based on the new laws and the new rules, I'm recommending that, effective next year, that we no longer continue with our K-5 Solo Academy program. That we share with our parents, that, you know, we understand that in-person learning isn't for everybody, but as a school district, we feel that to provide the best educational environment and future success for our students, they need to be in school with us. And then, parents do have options, right? And those options unfortunately would be, that they would need to withdraw from the school and go to an online provider, but those are options that, that they would have available to them. And based on the fact that we went from hundreds to forties to low twenties, to, with the people that want to come back, maybe we're taking a look at 10, 11. And I think those are acceptable numbers to make the decision. So, we are recommending that we do not have a Solo Academy, a virtual school for K-5 students for next year. And then I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to kind of talk about what she's learned through the secondary program.
Sure. And just to add to what Amy talked about, I oversaw the elementary for, as Dr. Reba said, probably six or seven years prior, and we had just a handful of kids, and those were medical situations, or extreme anxiety, those type of issues. Amy and I ran the data, and we feel that there's one currently in the elementary program that potentially would not come back due to that issue. The rest, we feel would return. In talking, when we look at secondary, so grade six through 12, Dr. Reba and I have had, as he said, multiple conversations about what's best, what's best for kids at this age level, where are they with their maturity, where are they with their academics? And so, similar to Amy, I looked at a lot of the data, both with parent surveys, I also asked the students how they felt about things, and then we compiled a lot of anecdotal data. So, just from the survey, we had 19 parents, just to give you a reference point, we have 64 students currently in the Solo Academy, which is sixth through 12th grade. It was 90 first semester, and last year, it was in the hundreds. So, we had a couple hundred, it dropped to 90, and now 64. So, we had 19 responses, parents responding to how do they feel about the Solo program as it was run this year. We had 90% say it worked great for our family. 11% said it was okay, these are prescripted answers, but 11% chose it was okay, but not exactly what we needed or wanted, and there was no one that said it was not a good experience. In asking them, you know, what are your current plans for your kids next year, based on where we are right now, we had 16% say they plan to go back to the building, 63% said they would most likely stay in the Solo program, and then some variations, you know, they're moving, they're not sure of their plan, et cetera. We tossed around the idea, do we have the kids come in one or two days a week, two or three, you know, depending on what we decided, to get in-person help? Is that something that we need, because we're seeing academic challenges, or absences? And so, we, I did survey them as well, and I asked parents, you know, if that was a requirement with Solo, that you had to bring your child in, or they drove themselves in, would you still be interested? And we had 25% said they would still be interested, 38% said not sure, and 38% said they definitely would not enroll in Solo. So, a couple of comments from parents, you know, do you like the program, how is it benefiting you, what has influenced your decision? And, a little different from the elementary, this is more about flexibility, the kids have some autonomy to potentially do Polaris half a day, and then they can do their school work in the evening. Or, they may have to work a job. It's the reality of some of our students, so they can do their work in the evening, on the weekends. I don't see this being abused as, you know, I just, I don't want to come to school, I'm going to stay home. That is not the case. We do have a handful of students that we have some attendance challenges with, which I'll talk about momentarily. But, again, the feedback that we got from the parents that responded was overwhelmingly positive. Students, likewise, again, we only had 10 respond, 50% said, I liked it, it helped me learn. 40% said it was okay, and then 10% said I hated it. Next year, what do you plan to do? 70% said they want to stay in Solo. And then I asked that same question, you know, if you have to come in one or two days to get work assistance, would you still be willing? 40% said, nope. 50% said, I'm not sure, and then 10% said yes. So, you know, I'll just read a couple comments. Given our child's proven independent work discipline, assignments are ahead of pace, good grade results, we find going back to the building one or two days to work on Solo work is not necessary, thanks for considering this. If there's a requirement to attend in-person, we would seriously consider other online options. And then just some other, again, anecdotal information about how it was helpful for the families, not just convenience, but in their education. So, a couple other notes I have that I will share with you, any, I'll pause for a second. Any questions on what I talked about in the survey yet? Okay. So, again, maturity-wise, we're seeing grades six through 12, they have, for the most part, the maturity, and the academic, I guess, integrity, if you will, to balance this workload. So, they can, it's paced out for them, they know, especially this year, you have to do this number of minutes, X number of minutes, and it has been spelled out since day one. You need 900 hours for the school year. Backtrack that, here's exactly how many assignments you need every week, here's how many minutes you need to complete every week. We have, I pulled grades from last year, and, no, I'm sorry, from first semester. So, with all of our students, when you take each individual course, we had 441 individual grades for a course, or courses taken. We did have 70 Fs out of 441. And in looking at that, we had a handful of kids that we sent back to the building, because they were not making progress, they were not logging in. Let's see, what else is? Currently, we have 23 students that are behind in work. So, every two weeks, Amy and I take a check, we look at assignments, we look where they are, we look at minutes. We run a list, we do put them in attendance as being unexcused absence, we do all of the things that we do for, as if they were in-person. Interestingly enough, or maybe not a surprise, a lot of these kids are the same ones that struggled in-person, and already had attendance issues, and attendance plans, so it is a pattern with them. We have three that are on attendance plans, and I have a host of other data, but I want to hear if you have questions, or, you know, my thoughts, and I'll of course leave it up to Dr. Reba, but I feel that this is a good match for our students. I feel the ones that are in this are in it for the right reasons, and if they're not, we can make that decision, and say, okay, we gave it a try, you either have to go back in-person, or we can look at the- in person, or we can look at the Solo Academy at the high school, which is a very prescriptive, they are in a room with a teacher, they are doing their work under the guidance of, of a staff member. So we have a few options. Thoughts, questions, or follow-ups?
I'm good. So just to summarize real quick what Erin said, the recommendation is that we keep the six to 12 Solo Academy, we, we allow the completely virtual option. If students are not performing, we then have a intermediary option to say, you're gonna be in a blended environment, you can do some online, but we're gonna require you to come to Strongsville Middle School or High School.
Correct.
To get that additional support. And if you can't do that, then we will require you to come back in person. That's really the little work that I've done is, when we have kids that are not engaging, I work with the families and set the criteria for when they're no longer to be able to participate. So eliminate K-5, keep six to 12 in the way that we've described. If there's no concerns or feedback on that, we will move ahead accordingly.
I have an answer for the gifted. Four out of 23 of our students are identified as gifted, K-5.
So they're choosing not to have anything?
Correct.
Through the, through the online program?
Or through math?
I don't know, I just looked for identification, I didn't know I had to do by some. I was trying to get it quickly.
They hold the trouble that in that there aren't any services.
Correct.
Sure. Are we okay with that? Okay.
Thanks.
We will start to share that and communicate that moving forward. Thank you, Amy and Erin, for your work. Amy's trying to hide her smile that.
No. I just want kids to be.
We want kids to have a great experience, absolutely.
Did the survey ask about their principal?
Interestingly, yes.
Is that all the paperwork you have?
I'll share with you.
That's the binders, that's the binders we're gonna do. If there's no questions, we'll move on with the agenda. We do have an item under Business Services, and Steve has thankfully turned on the air for us, so it could cool down a little bit. Haley, how's that sweater treating you over there?
I know.
Steve?
Good evening, everyone. One item on the agenda tonight is the resolution of intent to participate in the winter use contract of the Ohio Department of Transportation, or ODOT, cooperative purchasing program for sodium chloride, or in other words, rock salt, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the operations manager enters into an agreement between Strongsville City Schools and the Ohio Department of Transportation, for the purpose of bidding for the sodium chloride or rock salt, contract to be effective beginning September 1st, 2022, and terminating April 30th, 2023. Fund needs to be from the general fund, supplies and materials for custodial use, and that's found Exhibit B.
Thank you, Steve. We have one item under Human Resources, and I'll turn over to Jenny for her report. Jenny?
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, we have one resignation of a certified staff member. And go on with the other, 'cause I have one little item.
That's it, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Cameron, or?
Oh, I apologize, there was one other item.
It's too late, you'll have to call a special meeting.
Real quick, we did wanna give an update in terms of the COVID dashboard.
So I just wanna update you, you know, happy to say that I, I looked back about a month in, back to March 14th, and since March 14th, we've had a total reported of eight cases, which is pretty amazing, because I know some days we had 80 cases going on. So, you know, again, total of eight cases, those occurred in four of our buildings, so four of our buildings had no cases for over a month here, and out of those eight cases, two were siblings, one was a staff member, so we're just really seeing minimal cases at this time. As you may know, we no longer need to report any cases, I don't do weekly reports anymore to the Board of Health, we do not have to do line lists when we have cases, the only time we would report is if we notice, you know, some sort of cluster or grouping happening. And so, you know, what I'm recommending is that after spring break, I no longer continue the dashboard, and we're not required to report the cases, so again, why would we report them from the district? You know, we're gonna save everything, just knocking on a lot of wood here, but just to have it, but again, don't wanna, you know, keep, keep up with something that really is, you know, I think last week I didn't report anything, so that would be my recommendation moving forward.
No COVID, no COVID, eight cases since March?
Since March 14th, we had a total of eight reported, yeah.
And is there any questions? Can we do it today?
Sure, I'll be happy not to do it tomorrow.
Is there any, quite honestly, is there any contra to, I mean, I think our commitment to the community is as if we would have something as a surge or whatever, we would start it again, but.
Absolutely. We would just disable our webpage, and if need be, we would re-open it, re-enable it.
I'm comfortable starting tomorrow.
And full disclosure, I did have one email sent, 'cause I did forget, last Friday to do it, I'm out of practice now, and I, you know, I said, if you ever have questions or you wanna, we're still gonna track, if we get reports, we still want people to report, and we'll, we'll track that, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to, to share. But again, to, to do it each week, I don't think is necessary.
All right, the only, the only request I would have is that we update the, the website tomorrow, today or tomorrow, saying we're no longer recording it, not wait.
Sure.
Until we return, but do we have consensus? Is anyone else concerned?
I'm good.
Now that concludes my report.
Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means all items appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next, we have board policy. We have a first reading of our revised policy, 8510 Wellness. We are waiving the second and third readings, this is the policy that we pulled back at the last meeting for a little bit further discussion and massaging. Did you wanna talk about it? Do you care? You're the policy committee person.
Oh, no, go ahead, I didn't, I'm prepared, I don't even have a copy of it, hardly, so I can't.
So we do have a wellness policy, it is one of our longer policies, it's an important policy. The change we made was our commitment to recess slash breaks and acknowledging that that is important for all of our students, especially in the elementary grade, although I imagine the high schoolers would like recess also, they don't. But we did add language to our wellness policy, saying that every effort will be made, that students receive daily recess or a break, and that exceptions will go through the guidance of the superintendent. Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hausum, second by Mrs. Cobain. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Board of Education, other, do we have any Board of Education other? I just would like to share that I was able to go to the play la, last weekend, weekend before, last weekend. So it wasn't The Munsters, it was Addams Family, but it was, quite honestly, it was extremely enjoyable, it was a lot of fun, and for me, it was just a lot of fun to see all of the students and all of the staff doing something that they obviously loved, but it was nice to see in, in this age and generation where students can go home and spend time on the internet, or spend time doing whatever, groups of students came together and learned the music, and learned the songs, and memorized their lines, and gave three evenings of a very enjoyable time to everybody who came in attendance. So it was, it was just wonderful. Kudos to Mr. Jenkins and everybody, but you could see that it was something that everybody did out of love and energy and excitement, so that was really a lot of fun. And then the other, other I have, and if I mess any of this up, send me an email and teach me how to pronounce it. But we start our spring break after, as soon as I bang the gavel, spring break starts, so I wanted to wish a belated happy Shatra Navratri to those who celebrate that, a happy Ramadan, or a happy Ramadan Mubarak to those who celebrate that, a happy Hog Samia for those who celebrate that, and then a happy Easter for those who celebrate that, and a happy spring, and a happy good spring break for everybody. It was, it wasn't the latest spring break in memory, it sure is late in the year, and I know there are a lot of students and parents and teachers who are all looking forward to their spring break, so please have a happy and safe and restful spring break and come back for more learning. That's all I got for others, anybody else? Hearing none, we do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, and compensation of a public employee, and to prepare for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or terms and conditions of employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second, an enthusiastic second by Mrs. Bissell.
That was the fastest second I've ever heard.
I knew I could be fast.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
The motion carries, we will enter into executive session at 9:00 PM, we have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention and have a nice evening.